Police. This is the city of Flint, Dills. And everyone of y'all vote in the Flims. Everybody in the city has had a dumb test of a fact. The people in your ward, whether they're voting for you or not, whether they already is older than you now, whether they vote or not. The citizens of Flint is coming upon an election in the 94th. And we're confused as hell. We don't... There's terrible communication. And I'm asking, since the county legislature, the best they can do is put up a website that you can go to and receive some voter registration. Can the city of Flint put out some cards exactly like they put out those voter registration cards that they were sending to people to have everybody confused? It's better to know in the 94th. Also, in the first ward and the seventh ward, because those eligible voters need to know that they are eligible to vote. And also that there is an election. Because a website that people ain't going to, podcasts everybody ain't watching, the news, everybody ain't paying attention to. So another way of communication would be the same way that you got all those voter registration cards that I'm gonna do today. And since they received two voter registration cards, they should have received two letters letting them know that there's gonna be an election and they can also do their election. So... So kind of communication between the city, the state, and the county, and the residents, needs to be seen. Because you got people going out here getting signatures. They don't know if they're getting good signatures or bad signatures. You got, you got masks that say this house qualifies. But if you have a list of the voters, actual voters, you may go through that door and find out that then one of the people that is registered at that house lived there. What? You have people that think they are registered because they're registered through the state of Michigan, but they're not on the, uh, city of Flint voter registration group. It's a lot of confusion. And since the 94th councilwoman is not here and is coming in early, see that she's vacated, she only wants five more. Will somebody please do something? Thank you.
I would like, I need some answers today. I've been at my residence since 94. I'm on Brownell Street. I got, uh, I got a motorcycle, uh, girl. And I was smoking Miss Lewis. And I took her pictures and showed her pictures. This has been going on for the last two years. My whole neighborhood, everybody that's in the neighborhood is scared. The kids can't even come outside and play. We got these, uh, guys riding motorcycles up and down the sidewalk. The police have been out there multiple times. Uh, 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 I've spoken to the landlord. I've spoken to six today. I've talked to everybody there to talk to about this thing. This thing going on for the last two years. I got a, my house is like a prison. I've got bricks all around my house to keep these people off my property. I've took Miss Lewis's picture and showed her pictures of the six places. So this is something that's not made up. And the police have been out here like 12 times. And another neighbor stayed on the other side of me. He stayed there like, uh, as long as I have. But it was so bad, he had to move. I got a seven-year-old neighbor. She gotta turn her cinema fan up, they turn her radio, I mean, turn her cinema fan up, they turn her TV up just to go to sleep. I need answers. That's what I don't understand. This lady's been in court. The police have been out like, uh, 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 12 times. I'm doing everything that is possible. It's been 15 years ago, I got shot nine times. I'm in fear for my life. I'm waiting on the police right now. I'm on the police with me. I got trespassing signs. She had her game over there the other day. They touched my brick. Where it said no trespasses, they start making shit out of it. That goes on the other side of my property where it said no trespasses. They're gonna load it up over there. So I just need some answers. My listening, uh, I need some help in this situation. My life is in danger. I've spoken to the police multiple times. I'm not gonna let these people hurt me. And I've showed this lady through pictures. So this is not any fabricated, that's staying up. I got a thornbale character. So I don't know, I need some answers. I'm fearing of my life.
Miss Lewis.
Hey, uh, not in this booth, but in government office, you all have to go to ACO. ACO is a magistrate's consent party. And it's resolving, uh, that the city approved of providing the city of Flint, that the state of, uh, environmental bringings of energy, drinking water, and environmental health provision, has made allegations that the city of Flint is in violation of the Michigan State federal drinking wire agreement. Leon, you and I, we were the first to, uh, participate in changing service lines here in city of Flint. Please, you and I participated in going down to recall Governor Snyder. Councilwoman Carter, you can go down here and say, "Great." Y'all know how important it is for the city, the residents, to be a part of making decisions for ourselves also. They won't even put the ACO out so that we can be able to come up here and go along with you all to say, "Hey, you know what? This should be included in this violation, or this should be done, or that should be done." What is it that's wrong? What, what did the city violate? They won't even put it out. Do y'all have it? Are y'all just gonna go and say, "They violated?" You know, you have a mayor from the news now talking about, "Oh, we should be getting money from those sources." Well, what were you at the point when it started, Mayor, and you leave? You said that this is the floor, not the city. We're not getting anything. A lot of people have been turned down. Then he said, "It'll be at the end of the year." He don't even know that the first claim archer, which was Archer LLC, got fired because they didn't even do it. Then they had to start all over again. Don't come out here with these false pretenses or these false statements, not knowing for sure, just repeating something when you have not been following. If they wouldn't have voted and went to court, we would probably be getting more than $650 million. Then you turn around and hire a rogue who they settled for $2 million, but we didn't give him a contract and paid him more than $2 million. So really, they got away with our money. We were paying our own settlement. When are we gonna end up doing what's right? Nowhere on here have we been talking about why. We've been arguing with each other going back and forth with, uh, Kansas. And Councilwoman Lewis, we haven't even been talking about real stuff. I've been talking about the ACO. I've been asking about the ACO. No one has spoken about the ACO. Now that the ACO is here, where is it? Can we see it? Can we know what's going on? So if you can come up here and have an analytical, analytical debate about what's going on, how this city has failed the residents. Thank you.
My name is Gladys Williamson. I live in the room. My board. I actually don't wanna talk to yous. I wanna talk to yous. Because I want you to know that for us to come here every time they hold a meeting, they don't care about us.
One of yours.
They don't care about us. You don't know that you are Gladys Williamson. You are just a council. This is a corporation. You are a corporation.
Miss Williamson, please address the council.
Uh, okay. Yous don't care nothing about us. And for us to come up here all the time and try and get our breath out to tell you what's wrong in our wards ain't worth spit. They, you don't care about us? You hear this man getting up here saying that he ain't safe in his house and he's been shot all them times? Miss Lewis, could you look up for a minute? Have some respect for the people that are up here talking for that little bit of three minutes. Yeah, you go ahead and you shut your lips. Because that's pretty much how we feel about you. And, and when we get a chance, you're gonna be out of them seats. All of you are gonna be out of these seats. Because you know what? Because you don't care. And you don't tell these people that the east side is not gonna be a part of the Flint master plan. The first ward is gonna be a park. You don't tell these people this stuff. You go dancing around them and act like you care about these people and you don't care nothing about these people. You, you put this Burns out because she has the receipts for these checks that yous took money for? Yes. So that you can vote this money? You don't, you are not accountable, never, about how much money you spent. You go in your little dark corners, shut the door, and pass and decide what you're gonna spend. And then you come out here and you just go through the motions with us. That's all you do. That's all you do. You're good for not too much. Not too much. You're not good for nada. And you, Judy Priestley, you are the most worthless person sitting up there.
Good evening. Jan Marie Arner, seventh ward, council candidate. I'm gonna read out, thank you, Miss Williamson, that it is important that the council members present do not pay attention to the public speakers. I watched the council persons, uh, seventh and third wards converse when the first and second speakers were speaking to them. That is rude, is disrespectful to everyone. And you see, you're either reading your agenda for the evening, or you're watching Facebook, or whatever it is you're doing, instead of paying attention to the public, and it's reprehensible.
That's right.
Now, moving on. I request that a resolution be put forth and passed requiring a link be added to the city's online ARPA portal. The purpose of the link is to provide viewers with details per category as to the names of organizations and businesses awarded ARPA dollars, the contact person or manager in charge, the date awarded, amount awarded, and intended use of dollars. Furthermore, quarterly or at least by annual reports should be provided to council and the city to allow officials and the public to know how these taxpayer dollars are being used. Attention of information should be requested of recipients and reviewed as necessary by this council to help evaluate use. This information may be considered should future opportunities arise where taxpayer dollars may be awarded to the same applicants. Next, in consideration of the use of taxpayer dollars to pay for an upcoming travel and expenses related to an environmental conference in Iowa to be attended by Councilwoman Mashat, interim Councilwoman Mashat, forgive me, and for her to speak on behalf of her non-city of Flint water lab business and for her companion, Councilwoman Lewis, whose purpose is unknown, I ask that a resolution be put forth and passed preventing any and all council persons from using taxpayer dollars for purposes unrelated to or representative of any city of Flint or council city business as it relates to the Iowa trip. As a taxpayer, I request that the city of Flint receive reimbursement for both council persons, uh, as related to all money spent from taxpayer dollars within seven days of their return. In conclusion, I recommend a request that council persons Mashat and Lewis be censured for having to follow the power trust by requesting, accepting, and using taxpayer dollars for all of this paid trip to Iowa to participate in or attend a conference having nothing to do with the city of Flint and/or its council business. Thank you.
Here we go, this is church. They all having prayer service. May the seventh for the city of Flint. Where anybody that wants to come out and give prayer, get healed. All of us need it. That's what I'm here on. We have, uh, Saint Mary's this year, church. Please, everybody, and if this is your ward, please come out. Please, and show your face, let these people know that you know all of us need healed. All of us need prayer. Thank you.
My name is Dave Peachey, the fourth ward. I'm here to, I just went over this. Over a million dollars being spent on places like the Best Room, Burst of the Hill House, Castleburg, all these places, which I'm not against. But when I live in a neighborhood that is so filthy, it would put, you rent, excuse me.
What?
It's just unbelievable what's going on over there on the east side. I'm not talking fourth ward or the two-fourth ward, it's east side, your ward, where you live. We can't get anything cleaned up, nothing. We got these guys driving around in these brand-new city trucks, says,
That's right.
Neighborhood station, takeaway improvement. I wonder what the improvement is. When I was growing up in there, if you park on a sidewalk, you gotta take it. If you, if you didn't cut your grass, so you come and cut it, keep the neighborhoods out. Now, those cars being stripped right in the front yard.
That's right.
People are hurt. It doesn't matter. They just do anything they want and there's no repercussions. And I've dealt with you, Priestley, I don't know how many times.
Come on.
Oh, that's so funny.
And nothing. And I'm not going against any controversy. I'm just telling you, it's over now and it has, something has to be done. And the summer's coming up and crimes are already starting to come. These people driving around with no license plates on their cars. They got windows so dark you couldn't see it, they have a search light. I don't think the police are not, of course, I don't see too many police over there anyway. They don't worry about it. But I see them stay hot once in a while, you sound awkward when they can't do nothing. But it's just a shame. And American citizens, and we got a lot of retirees in Littlewood to keep their places up, have to live in an environment where they can't go out after dark or they can't walk on the sidewalks because they're in such bad shape. They're dumping tires all over them. How many fires have they been in the last month? Burning everything down. They strip them, you can watch them strip a house. Then as they strip it, they burn it, then they salvage whatever's left. Yeah, I told them. I go place by place. Not, they have done nothing to be undone. They don't, they don't pick up tires, they don't do nothing. And you know it's good, I'm not lying or making it up, they haven't done nothing.
Yes, I'm the second ward. I'm here to, I'm speaking of a lot of issues that's happening here on this city. And I'd like to take the blame for it being people like my fault for not coming in here, taking time, out of my schedule to see what's really going on in the city. And the council, I don't mean council, but prior councils, have left them with the same people that this city wanted to do. They get up here and do what they want to do. That was the people. And us, as people, getting tired here, you guys.
That's right.
Doing what you wanna do. And I'm so glad that you got this TVs up and down. So the people have all can see what you guys doing and what needs to be done. And hopefully, we'll get more people like me to come up here to address you guys about the problems that we have in this city. Because as a family, you guys must have lived in this. You guys don't see what's really going on. And you guys take your time among each other, but you can't help it.
Share, share this.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Permit, fifth ward. I just have one question. When can we get an update on the water discovery this winter years?
Answer it here.
Answer it.
No, it's afterward. It's after, it's after. It's after, man.
Hello, everybody. Want to sit by the stupid looking? I'm from the first ward. And I just want you to jump out, to sit out here and to look up here. And y'all supposed to be people of height, in high position. But y'all can sit and talk among one another and not look at the people who are talking to you.
Thank you.
And that y'all just can't see us all, which you never made me see.
That's right.
And I pray that, I pray that y'all get out. So y'all have control of that. And when they come in here and sit and try to look down on somebody,
Appreciate all my babies.
They in a bad place.
I gotta go.
You're in a bad, a bad position. It's what you would do. And you're not paying attention to what you're doing, like my lady right there.
Yeah.
But I come tonight to bring down, to tear down the stronghold.
That's right.
I'm tearing it down tonight. Baby, you gotta go. Your attitude, that's your god. It's not for the people of the city, of the people. And you need others up here, they follow you.
That's right.
But baby, just like I keep saying, I'm happy, your ass gonna be kicked over, baby. He said, wherever I bury him, he don't hurt. But he will find him and have it. I bury your ass tonight.
She loving him too. She loving him.
My name is Beverly Bigley. I'm in the third ward. We don't have a what, a week for you? Even though?
Nope.
You can't, Miss Mashat, I'm ashamed of you to sit up and tell Councilwoman Jerry Winfrey that she, you showed her how to be a lady. You twice, she twice your age. Anything, you should have been showing your daddy how to treat women. And I keep, I'm gonna keep saying, 190 times you owe Councilwoman Jerry apology to get up and try to tear her down for something that you and the delinquent is doing that's wrong.
Right.
And Quincy Murphy, I've been out here knocking these doors down and I ain't stopping. And you should be ready for it. But I had, uh, I got a little gift for you. People, people don't tell you to my feet what they call pull-ups. You need to pay for the shitty ass. They call you shitty ass, bro. And if you're gonna be shitting on this stuff, call your ass. And show this man, and make him back to you, how you do things. I'm leaving you, I'm leaving you a pack. That's not even a problem. Anytime you go somewhere, you be moving on yourself. Anytime you go somewhere, you be moving on yourself.
Ma'am.
Ma'am.
Sit down.
A hundred.
You can't do that, Judy.
And I got something for you too. We coming after you next, and we coming after the rest. And we coming, we coming after you next.
She can't stop her. Hey, I mean, it's, it's, I'm...
But I'm here tonight just to say, so y'all get ready for y'all speaking.
You can't.
Anybody out here, help raise me, or help raise my kids. Y'all should be on y'all singer, out of mind.
Hey, I'm trying to find a child singer.
Look at this, um...
Oh, my God.
All I can have to say is that I pray in my lifetime that my grandchildren, I can see my grandchildren live with clean water, the streets fixed, the sidewalks that they don't have to jump over.
That's right.
Or they don't have to have risks of falling, that they can ride a bike down the street without riding over into the grass.
Yep.
I pray that I can grow a garden free from lead in the soil and free from water to water my garden with dead ends. I pray that my grandchildren get to see a fair and honest council sitting in front of them who's gonna vote for things for them to be able to live a prosperous and happy life. That they don't have to fear that when they go into a school, they gotta take a bottle of water to drink it, or that a ceiling, or something to fall in in a building that they go into. Not to talk about the schools, but the schools are handling this. But that they can walk into their friends' homes and don't have to worry about the ceiling falling in because stuff have been taken care of for the roots in their community. I just pray that at one point in time or another, that they can benefit off of the sweat, blood, and tears that their, that their ancestors, their forefathers did use to be able to give that to them here in the city of Flint. It's a shame that as a citizen of the city of Flint, a citizen, that I have spent, I won't say my whole entire life, but my family has been here and I've been back and forth. Because anytime I moved and left the city, I was here at least once or twice a month to check on my properties and my family. But to see what I see before me right now, that ain't happening, this ain't good. This, this is not good.
No.
This is not good. Flint has too many milestones and too many hills that they jumped over to make it prosperous here. We could once get it back, but we'll never get it back as long as what we have in front of us is in front of us.
That's right.
I'm waiting for you to pay attention to us.
Pay attention.
Do not collide to us. My council person, well, I don't know. He likes partitions, so it could be in the front.
I don't know.
They can't look at us.
It's very scary to come up here because we hear about the things that this council has done to community people.
That's right.
Very frightening, which is one of the first things I said when I came to council. As an 80-year-old person, I would love for the police to take me up and bring me down. I stay here as late as you have sometimes. This is Winfrey Carter. I so appreciate you being here tonight. I'm Mr. First Ward Councilperson, Eric Wayne. What he did for this city, not just this ward, but he did for all of us.
Ma'am.
He looked at us when we came to council meeting, he would come and sit with us. He would talk to us, we knew he cared. He wouldn't take a trip for another committee in lieu of staying here to help us.
Amen.
He's only been on the council for a little while and already you're beating and showing something. I don't know. I hope that there would sometime soon be a resolution that says these partitions are gone. And Mrs. Priestley, you talk about how people don't like you. The council doesn't even like the community.
Right.
How do you think we feel? It's not about you. It's not ever about the council.
Right.
It's always the community. Always the community. And we tell that you don't care about us.
That's right.
No resolutions to help us.
None.
It's all for you, for you.
Spin, spin, spin.
And we need, we need, we need, we deserve, we pay taxes, we pay our wiring.
That's right.
You make us rules that people can't even be interviewed for council if they haven't paid their taxes or they haven't paid their wiring. That's behalf. Everybody has a right. You asked resolutions and said first offenders should have proper housing, but you wouldn't put anything in there about child molesters.
Right.
And I didn't ask for that, I came and asked for that. But you, again, you take up too much of your time. Only Miss Winfrey Carter's looking at me.
That's right.
And, and the city clerk, you have not to send out a correction to all the mistakes that have been made. People don't know what to do about it. Two weeks, two weeks, we need a correction. Let's hear a resolution from the council that says we're gonna... Thank you, that is your time.
She don't thank you.
I have hope for the city. But when it comes down to navigating city hall, the building department, planning, zoning, it's a different, it's a different thing. And I think there's a lot of changes in place to help me easily navigate for the average person. Uh, but I'll just give a couple of examples of how I think that program will help. I think a lot of cases, because we don't speak those languages as our natural tone, we get left out of opportunities to impact our community. Thank you. Uh, that program is to help regular folks who are here in the city... Our program is to help regular folks who are here in the city who have a hard to see empty buildings, empty properties, redevelopment. They're having to wait for someone else to come in and fix it. It's to equip regular people with the ability to learn that language and get some assistance, some capital, so that they can walk through the architect, walk through zoning and planning, and be able to do business, improve their neighborhood on their own. Um, I think right now of a guy, he's a barber. He's been renting the same spot, he's been doing it for years. He's been renting the same spot for probably fifteen years. I'm more than confident because I see how he runs his operation. He could buy a building, he'd be the perfect person, he's a staple in the neighborhood. But this isn't his language. I would love for you all to be able to support this initiative to help folks like him who now I go in the shop and I see not only his kids, but his grandkids coming to shop. That's an opportunity for him to keep making an impact in that neighborhood. And instead of paying increased rent because somebody else comes in from my state and up to the rent where he's renting at, it gives him the opportunity to buy maybe a block of building, beautify, put his heart and his love into it. And maybe that's something he can pass on to his kids and his grandkids. And so, it's scenarios like that, because again, I, I watch his kids for a while. I'm watching his grandkids now. This is the type of generational change that I hope that our council can get behind. Uh, I have no vested interest in this other than I see enough empty buildings around here that I like to see other people participate in the process. So, I would encourage you to have an open mind. If there's questions that maybe can be resolved, I would hope that this is something that can pass. Thank you.
I just think that Ms. Winfrey Carter's own apology, the way she was talked to at the last meeting, that was a great, not so nice. I must apologize. Um, I'm here to talk about the water heights we came forward and about people already got their house on the chopping block. Um, people struggling to keep taxes up, water bills up, and then going to add more money on top of that.
That's right.
And then about the person that came in about the, uh, a property complex that let her for rent, has no income and they from another state. We just cleared out a bunch of, um, apartment buildings for people coming in from other states, leaving a mess and four million dollars in taxes and two million dollar water bills. And people can put out these low-income apartments because when you come here from another state, who can they get a hold of? Nobody is checking up on these people. By the time somebody notices it's out of control, then we just left with more abandonment. It should be offered to the people in the city. They should be able to make a couple million dollars a year, a million dollars in their revenue in the city because they live here. And then if I'm using a management company, I mean, who here to check the management company? Are y'all gonna take that on? We barely getting help now. It's just so much more than can be done with these properties. People in the city need them opportunities just like these big investors and everybody else that come in and do, because they get offer funds to fund their businesses. Why can't we get offer funds for ours? And that's what I'm talking about, T-shirts and new jeans. I'm talking about a building or two, a little land, a little, you know, property that's gonna keep your generation rich, um, what's going on? I'm wondering why we can't have that, why we're not deserving of that? Because when the city fell down, we decided people that stayed through that crisis and paid these taxes and stayed in the city, went through it when nobody else would. When people left, they left because they didn't wanna go through. Now that it's a turnaround coming up, you got people coming from all over the country wanting to buy up this city. This is my cover, it's just a fight. Yes, we, yes, sometimes we get out of pocket. But because we living, this thing is not, it's just not fair. When the weakest of ten years for our crisis, no money. Then when you sit on the phones and still no money, and you're looking at about a thousand dollars. That's not even gonna cover half of these people that do water bills or property taxes on their homes. And then when you look at, um, your property taxes, you got mine, you got this for money, you got this for such, such a modest city. We're not doing anything. Gen C towns get all the benefits that Flint get, but we're paying for everybody out of money. We are the force. I just, y'all just, please, don't just beg, y'all. Do something for us. Make us proud and be like, yeah, we don't like them, but they showed us for us. Give us something brave about, about y'all besides wanting to go anger, anger to it, y'all.
That's right.